Lady Justin, phone me over at the shop. So we're going to have a general update as we always do with any council meeting, especially in workshops, so we just update all of the members with what's been going on. So we're covering September the 2nd of September. We have an update on the pool, that is this Thursday week, the state government will be handing down its budget, which means we then should have the firm confirmation of the $5 million to repair and reopen the pool. So whilst we've had confirmation of it, we haven't had the deed signed off because the government, we're not prepared to just go ahead without that deed being solid. MI Global will present to us with a business case for the future pool development in October, and we're working with MI Global to include this presentation in an upcoming workshop, which I expect will be fully packed. Safety. A reminder that our next safety event is the community arm this Wednesday, the 11th of September, at the Moona Arts Centre at 5:30pm. And I urge anybody in the community who's able to come to please come along. We are seeing sadly an increase in savoury and antisocial behaviour, and this council is firmly about standing up to that and doing whatever we can. At this session, Dr Selinda Sherlock will give a presentation on how the community as individuals can keep themselves safe and what they can do to help when faced with suspicious or concerning behaviour. Once we have feedback from the community about city safety from Wednesday session, we will add this to feedback from the businesses that we've had to take to our safety roundtable discussion, which is scheduled for the 14th of October. So what we really want to get across here is that we are fully committed to finding ways to deal with antisocial behaviour on our territory and hopefully in conjunction with the neighbouring councils and the state government. So then we're going to be lobbying for key decision makers, including politicians and senior government officials, to attend that last session where we will discuss possible solutions for the safety issues that we face. Community Budget Survey. Everyone loves a good budget. Work has commenced on the community budget survey, which will be released early this year to allow for elected members budget bids. I do need to explain those, they're not just pop up or who can outbid the others. It's an opportunity for elected members to actually put forward to those people making the decisions on the budget, ideas that have come from their community or people they represent. And then if it gets approval from the consensus, we see if we can fund it. It's not always guaranteed. We're aiming to release that survey in late September and present findings in an open workshop early December. So again, the whole community are well and truly welcome to join us there. For our community engagement and events, we have a pop-up, and that is like a little table with three elected members this Thursday on the 12th of September at Northgate between 11 and 12. So if you have a burning issue you'd like to ask someone from the council about, you're most welcome to pop along and meet one of your elected members. And as for the elected members, if you could let Krista know by close of business tomorrow, if you're able to attend, and you are welcome to come for either the full three hours or part thereof, whatever suits your agenda. Citizenship Ceremony. We had an amazing citizenship ceremony the other day, and it was fantastic to have so many people from different nationalities. And I've got to credit our general manager with his multilingual skills because one of the names was 47 characters long. Yeah. So anyway, it was a beautiful ceremony. Our last citizenship ceremony is next Tuesday, 17th of September. So that's another event we're worth attending. As for the 60th anniversary celebrations, so for those online who may not caught up with this, this city is celebrating its 60th year anniversary as a city. This week you'll see the start of promotion for our 60th anniversary celebrations, and these will include a family fun day on Sunday, the 20th of October, followed by a number of smaller events during that time. Now, for the grants programmes, Carols. Carols Grants closed last Friday with seven applications received. Assessment of these applications will occur next week with notification of funding expected soon after that. And as for the cultural celebrations grants, the programme is open, and I'm reminding everyone to share it amongst your network, please. Community Activities. This week, the former ice skating rink building will reopen as an art gallery. This exciting new venue houses a collection of artworks featuring a reflection of styles passed down through three generations of ethnicised artists. Now, I'd like to personally congratulate everyone involved in the Clermont Daffodil Camellia and Springflower show, which was held over the weekend. Did anyone get to go? No? Oh, I can tell you, it was packed. It was absolutely amazing, and so many, so many beautiful flowers. And it really brightened up a rather dull weekend. But it was just as busy on the Sunday when I drove past as well, which is a wonderful thing. I also had the pleasure of attending the Nearest Island Service Awards on the weekend, and I wanted to congratulate all the recipients of those awards, many of them living in our city, and Nearest Island is a major employer for our city. And I think there were about seven people who were celebrating 40 years of service and probably another seven or so 25 years of service, so that's extraordinary. And today in our open workshop, and thank you to everyone who's in attendance and who's listening online, today we were here from Scout Winter on the important work they are doing to make sure children and young people who come into the contact with the council are safe. And I'll just give you a little plug for the next future workshops. They will include the Future of the Pool Business Case, City Safety is another one, and Results of the Community Budget Survey. So they will be notified well and truly in advance. Now, my sincere apologies, I haven't, if you don't mind Scout, I haven't introduced our wonderful elected team, so I better go around the table and do that. Alderman Justin Stringer, thank you. Councillor Molly Kendall, councillor Harry Quick. The Deputy Mayor Russell Yaxley, I'm Sue Hickey, mayor. We have the general, oh, he's not the general manager, he's the CEO of Glanville City Council, Tony McAllen. Then we have Alderman Stephen King, we have Alderman Stuart Slade, and we have Alderman Shane Alderton. So there you go. Can I ask Scout to please, sorry, I'm getting a little...
And me.
Oh, and Jen Dunphy. Alderman Jen Dunphy is online, everybody. And I'll ask Scout...
I'm not sharing my Jane.
Thank you. Scout and on to give us the address for today.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Share this presentation. I'm going to catch up. Okay, thank you for having me. My name's Scout, and I've been working, I've been including this project in my work plan since April, but I've been with council since October last year, and love it. So thanks for having me. Before I get started, I'll just acknowledge that we're meeting on Aboriginal country, and in the context of this presentation, it's important to acknowledge the profound and ongoing impact of colonisation on Aboriginal children and families. And we'll talk a little bit about how that affects the way that we implement our response to the Child and Youth Safe Organisation framework as we go forward. It's also really important to acknowledge the wellbeing of Tasmanian Aboriginal children and young people has been and continues to be based on a deep and continuous connection to family, culture, community and country. And I'd like to extend my respects to any Aboriginal people who are here or watching this video in the future. Does anyone want to add in anything to that?
No, thank you.
It's also really important to acknowledge that it's really likely that someone who has their own experience of child sexual abuse is either here in the room with us or watching this video. And if that is something that affects you or a loved one, there are lots of services that can support you, which I'll list later on in the presentation. But I do encourage people to reach out and use those services. You can also contact me and for any staff who are looking for support, our EOP are also available to support in that way. So today we're going to cover a bit of a, it's a bit of a lightning kind of introduction to what the law is and the new, the new mechanisms that the government's put in place to help organisations like us meet our obligations. We're going to talk about our response as a council and what's coming up, what you can do as elected members, what the community can do, and some of the challenges and opportunities that we've identified already. We're not going to, this is a work in progress, so it's sort of an update. And if people and community do have questions about this, I would encourage them to get in touch. Right, we're going to start with a small, short video, it's only two minutes, and hopefully the technology will work with us. This is a video...
Child harm and abuse can have devastating effects. They may impact someone's life long into adulthood. Abuse can occur anywhere, including in sports clubs, dance schools, and other places where children would normally expect to be safe. It's the responsibility of all adults in New South Wales to report to the police if they suspect or believe a child is being harmed. This is called child protection. It's an organisation's response to a high-risk situation. It's often used in a family context as well. Taking steps to prevent abuse is known as being child safe. This describes what your organisation can do so that harm and abuse is less likely to happen, and perpetrators are more likely to be caught. The Royal Commission into Institutional Responses to Child Sexual Abuse recommended organisations use the Child Safe Standards to help keep children and young people safe from harm and abuse. The Child Safe Standards provide a framework for your club to help you embed child-safe practices, procedures and policies to help keep children and young people safe. The standards describe what it means to be a leader of a child-safe organisation, how to involve children in decisions that affect them, what policies and procedures you should have, how child-friendly reporting processes help ensure children are safer. Is your organisation aware of the Child Safe Standards? How are they being implemented?
Earlier, even though this video was made for New South Wales, our Child and Youth Safe, our Child Safe Standards are almost identical. Okay, and for anyone who wants a copy of those, I do have a few copies here, and they're all linked inside the presentation as well. So the background to the new legislation, which is called the Child and Youth Safe Organisation Act, is the Royal Commission into Institutional Child Sexual Abuse and then the Tasmanian Commission of Inquiry. Those processes revealed a lot of problems in the way that our organisations keep records, respond to allegations and respond to actual reports of child abuse. There are a lot of recommendations came out of both of those processes, and what we're going to talk about today is some of the mechanisms that were recommended as a result of those inquiries. The Tasmanian government created the Child and Youth Safe Organisations Act in May 2023, and that comes with a couple of extra parts to government, like a new independent regulator and a new mandatory reporting scheme. We'll unpick those a bit later. The DCIP produced this report, Safe Secure Supported, our safeguarding framework in September. In October last year, the Department of Justice published the interim compliance guidelines. And that was around the time that I think Marina did a presentation to, maybe to you all about that. And we were given the very scary deadline of the 1st of January, and freaked out a little bit about what we were going to do. But we were reassured by the Office of the Independent Regulator that those deadlines were not for completion of this work, but beginning the work. So that's quite reassuring. Since then, the Office of the Independent Regulator has been appointed, and that's Louise Coeur, and she comes to Tasmania from the Office of the Children's Guardian in New South Wales, so she has a lot of experience in this space. She's really warm and generous with her knowledge, and she's just, she's just very encouraging, which is a good, I think, a really good quality for someone in that role. Okay, and we had our first working group meeting in June this year. Talk a little bit about the work that we've done since then. So the actual law, the Child and Youth Safe Organisation Act, is the main legislative framework that spells out exactly what we need to do to comply with the new Tasmanian law. Alongside of that is the Child and Youth Safe Standards, so those are the 10 standards that guide how we make our organisation as safe as we can. And there's one overarching principle, which is the principle of, universal principle of Aboriginal cultural safety. We'll talk more about that in a second. The Independent Regulator, so that sits outside of government and exists to help government and other organisations follow up any investigations that need to happen when something, when a report is made or an allegation is made. And the Reportable Conduct Scheme is the new mandatory reporting scheme. So we already have the Child Safety Mandatory Reporting Scheme, which is when a child is in danger. We have people in designated roles who are legally obliged to report that. So anyone who's a teacher or social worker has to, has to report that. Well, this is the other side. So this one, the Reportable Conduct Scheme, is about workers and adults and their behaviour. And they complement each other, and we'll talk more about that in a second.
Can you explain the Aboriginal cultural safety?
I'm going to get to that very soon. Do you mind hanging on for a slide or two?
You raised it in the previous slide.
Yep, so this is just, yep, we can skip ahead to that. Yep. So the cultural, cultural safety, this is a sort of, it's an expanding, our understanding of it and our framework of it is expanding. So the idea is that the independent, the deputy independent regulator, that position has become an identified position for an Aboriginal person to take, and that person will be giving us more guidance about how to, how to meet that standard. But the idea is that an Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander child or young person and their family, their culture and their identity needs to be respected throughout any of these processes that happen. So if a child is Aboriginal and they come, they make a report, or their family member makes a report, their connection to their Aboriginal culture and their identity needs to be taken into consideration throughout the interactions that we have with them. That sounds very vague.
So are our two childcare centres culturally safe for Aboriginal children?
Yeah, so that's a, that's a great question, and that's something we'll be examining more as we get a bit more guidance from the Independent Regulator. So the childcare centres we have are already meeting these standards. It's the rest of council that needs to meet the standards. So the childcare centres have had these standards in place for a couple of years now. They're national standards. But under the Tasmanian law, our obligations expand out to the rest of council as well.
Children of Muslim faith, have they got the same cultural guidelines?
Yep, so I think it's standard, standard four, equity is upheld. And that standard actually includes, it actually, it's supposed to be implied so that children of any background and of diverse identities and needs have their rights respected as well, under that standard. But the universal principle is about Aboriginal cultural safety, acknowledging the, I guess, the history.
So it's not just Aboriginal specific? You know, we look after the Muslims who want to wear the hijab and all the rest of the thing, and children taught, as well as respecting Aboriginality?
Yep.
Also, you know, other faiths?
Yep, that's a really important point. So the universal principle only applies to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander children, but standard four spells out that everyone's identity needs to be respected, including people from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds of various faiths, genders, disabilities and access, access needs. Like, we are expected to meet those and respect those needs regardless of that person's background. Yep.
So I appreciate your extreme interest in it, councillor Quick, as a former teacher, but I don't think we've discussed anything quite as serious as this subject. So maybe we can take questions afterwards, if that's okay, and let Scout get through the presentation?
Yep. Yep, happy to chat afterwards as well, if that makes sense. There is a bit more information here about the universal prin, the universal principle. At this point, I'm still not aware if a deputy regulator has been appointed. So that's that identified role for an Aboriginal person to, to take. But the idea of that universal principle is to address these sort of historic power imbalances and the additional risks that children of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander background face and the additional vulnerability that they face because of our history. It's okay, let's go back to this slide. So alongside the, the new law, the Office of the Independent Regulator and the reportable conduct scheme, there were also some changes made to some information sharing provisions. So under the Privacy Act and the Information Sharing Act, some amendments have been made so that organisations can share information about workers, about adults against whom an allegation has been made more easily. And that's not to say that you'd call the media. It's, we'll discuss more about what that really means a bit later. But information sharing was identified as one of the really big barriers that organisations faced when responding to an allegation. And you can see that in the case of some of the high-profile convictions and history that we've got in Tasmania with staff being moved around and these issues never being addressed. So those information sharing provision amendments are responding to that. There's also been changes to the archive's disposal schedule, which is very fascinating and we're really lucky that we have a senior records manager on staff who's very passionate about this and who's been able to explain to me what this means. But this means how long we keep records for. So now we legally have to keep any records about any child abuse allegations for 125 years past the date of birth of the child or young person involved. And all of our policy and procedure needs to be kept permanently. So we're working away on that in the background, how to do that. There's also been some changes to the working with vulnerable people procedures around that. It's now called the registration to work with vulnerable people. And there are some, we're hoping that there's going to be some information sharing amendments regarding that as well on the horizon to, to address the issue of like state bodies sharing information between states, because at the moment, that's a bit of a, that's a challenge in that space. We'll talk more about that. So the Child and Youth Safe Standards are ten principles that basically step us through all of the different lenses that we can use to look at how we interact with children and young people and how we can make them as safe as possible. I think it's really, it's important to also say clearly that it's not possible to be perfect, but this is about being as safe as we can be and making sure that we close as many loopholes and we have mechanisms in place so that when, so if and when something does happen, we're able to respond to it in the best way that we can. Yes, and it's all about embedding a culture of child safety. So they talk about, like putting on a pair of glasses, they help you look at child safety. So everything we look at, we look at with a lens of child safety so that we embed it through all of our activities. Okay, so the Office of the Independent Regulator, this is the new, the new body that was created by the Tasmanian Government and they started hiring some of our people, as you know, in December last year. So we have some allies inside, inside that office. And they are genuinely lovely. Every interaction I've had with them so far, which to be fair, haven't been that many, has been really lovely and they've come and done a workshop. So there was a workshop in KG5, which you attended earlier this year, May, wasn't it? So this is their website. There is a lot of information up there and every time I look at it, there's more stuff up there because, you know, they haven't even been in, they haven't even been operating for 12 months, but their resource section is, is really fantastic. So for anyone who wants to dive deeper into this, anyone in the community who wants to learn about this, there's so much information on their website. And one of the very nice things that they told, told us in the workshops that they've offered us has been that they're really in this green zone at the moment. So because this legislation is new, they're in that education, advice, engagement and guidance section of this diagram. So we don't want to end up in that pointy section at the top. We're down here in the green section at the bottom. So everyone in the state, all of the organisations that are affected by this law are now in this space, working out how to apply it to their organisations, learning, getting the training that we need to do, the best job that we can do. This diagram kind of gives you an idea of how, how it will go as time passes. If you're, if an organisation doesn't respond to the, to the legislation in a timely manner, doesn't put their processes in place and something happens, an allegation is made or a report is made and they don't respond to it in, in the way that's expected, then the Office of the Independent Regulator would move up towards that sort of compliance and regulation stage. But for now, they're still down in that green zone, giving a lot of support, running a lot of information sessions and I'll just say it again, if anyone is a member of an organisation that involves children and wants to learn about this, just pick up the phone and call them because they're super helpful. Okay, so the next arm of this new framework is the reportable conduct scheme. And there's a lovely poster here to sort of, which sort of shows how, how the process works. So reportable conduct scheme complements the child safety reporting scheme. So the advice and referral line, which is about the child safety. The reportable conduct scheme is about adult behaviour. So reportable conduct, this, we'll come to that. Next slide. Reportable conduct fits under this, under this specific set of behaviours. So it is behaviour by an adult towards a child and a child is under 18 and an adult is over 18, which includes or could be fit into one of these categories. The, the approach is that if you have a concern and you're not sure if it really fits one of these categories, still investigate it. So if a report was made and you were like, I don't know where that fits, still investigate it. But this is a scheme that is designed to help us respond to people's worries, basically. There is a, a video there that, because the section rooming is fairly vague, there is a four-minute video there which we're not going to watch now, but it just describes what that means. And it's, it's all about an adult's, it's kind of coaching and manipulation of a child or young person of their family to enable more serious behaviour later. So it's early stages. Does that make sense to everybody? That video is quite good. It's very simple and clear and hopefully you'll be able to just click on that with the slides that I sent out to you. And there is a provision down the bottom which covers failure to report. So that's also reportable in itself. If you knew that something was happening to a child and you didn't report it, then that itself is reportable. So the reportable conduct scheme process, what is it? It's a mandated timeline. So the first thing to know is that our head of organisation is, is personally responsible for making sure that we meet the timeline around the, around this reportable conduct scheme. So that's our CEO, Tony. And so within three days of council receiving a report, we would have to notify the Office of the Independent Regulator that someone had made an allegation against one of our staff or one of our volunteers or somebody who works in some capacity for us. And that does include contractors, actually. So the three-day report is very simple. It's just giving them a heads up that something's happening and any actions that we're planning to do to follow up from that. You're then given 30 days to investigate and at the end of, after those 30 days, you need to make a follow-up report. Now, you might not have concluded your investigation at that time, but you need to report back and say what you've done. And the purpose for these mandated timelines are really about accountability. So if you know that a report has been made, you've identified, you've notified the government, you then have to actually do the investigation and report on your findings. Sorry, so this, these reports, details of what's in the reports is, is on the slides there. So the, the three-day report is fairly simple. It's just some dot points, who's involved, what their role is, any, any other information details that you have, were there any witnesses, et cetera. The 30-day report is requesting a bit more detail, which you would find through your investigation. There is plenty of information and templates now on the Office of the Independent Regulator's website. So if you want to find out more about what that looks like. When I spoke to the staff at the Office of the Independent Regulator in May, they said they'd already received 180 reports and that probably around 60% of them were serious at that point. So you can only imagine how many more reports have been made since then. But it just, I think that that just shows that this process is actually creating space for, for those things to be followed up. Some councils have already had to do investigations and some of them are in the media at the moment, you've probably seen them. As a, something that's happened is a lot of councils have found that they don't, they're not comfortable investigating themselves or their staff are not comfortable investigating each other. That's a fairly predictable problem to have. And as a response, the local government association has put together a, is putting together a multiple use register for organisations that are willing to do that investigation. Obviously, there's a fee involved, but they are willing to, to be that external investigator. And I'm raising that now because it's an opportunity for people to register themselves or their businesses in that space, but it's also an evolving space for us. It's a, it's a resource for us to access, should we need to. And I will also say that Legat's doing really great work supporting councils in this space. So the interim compliance guidance is a really long document. It's like 180 pages or something. It's fairly readable for that, given that it's so long. It is pretty good, it's pretty accessible. And based on that document, which was released in October last year, I put together this diagram to kind of show which stage we're in now. So at the moment, we're in the audit stage and that's a continual process. But because we're starting from scratch, we've identified like a fairly big mountain of work that we need to do. We'll keep auditing as we go forward. At the moment, we're at the audit stage. So we've been putting a, we've put a team together across council with some really great people in it. There's a lot of enthusiasm and a lot of really great experience as well in that team. And we are, we've identified, like I said, we've got, we've got a big mountain of work in front of us, but we've got it written down, so that's a very good starting point. It's not, yeah, it's a list now, which is good. After we get through that list of it, we'll be implementing our new policy and procedure. We'll be developing internal training so that our staff, volunteers, apprentices, anyone who is a worker under this legislation understands how to use our systems. Evaluating that as we go, as we go along. Some of you might remember back in November last year, we did a community-wide consultation and there were two purposes for that consultation. The first was to involve our community in our response to this legislation. So one of the standards, it's going to test me, I have to remember which one. Standard two, children and young people are informed about their rights, participate in decisions affecting them and are taken seriously. So when, when we read this, the community development team, and Marina was still here at that time, decided that the best thing we could do was to ask our community and get some input from our community on how, how we should respond to this. If you haven't read my fantastic report already, it is available on the Glenockie City Council website. We had really good representation. So a lot of people who responded were 19 or under. So that's our primary focus group for this. We had really good responses from Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander community members and really great representation from LGBTIQA+ community. The other purpose of this report was to find out what council, what community thought council should do for young people. And as you can see, the community team has done a really great job of implementing some of the recommendations that we got from this, from this survey. So primarily, when we talk about the legislation, we asked people where we should promote this information, how we should, how people wanted to report a child safety concern, what would make reporting safer or easier. And it was really, really clear that people felt that they wanted multiple ways to report. So they wanted to be able to speak to a person, they wanted to be able to call up and they, some people wanted to be able to send an email. So our process will contain all of those mechanisms to make it as easy as possible. And it was also really clear that children and young people get their information from trusted adults. So we need to really make sure that adults know how to, how to do this. Right, so we need to promote to adults, not just to children. Katia has recently put this page up on our website and this is, it's still, it's an evolving page, but it's really great that we have something up there now. So on, on the council website, if you go down to the bottom on every single page, you can report a child safety concern, it will take you to this page. And it has its own section as well in the menu as well. Our working group, which has had our first meeting in June, we have 22 staff from every department of council, except for, we don't have anyone from our waste management site at the moment, but we have, I think, really great representation. We're meeting every two months and we've got a pretty comprehensive compliance plan. And our plan is, it was drafted by Marina and it's, it's been amended and added to quite a lot since then. But it's built around the ten standards. So if you want me to show you that later, I'm happy to show you that, but it's just a fairly overwhelming spreadsheet at this point. But it does have a traffic light system to, to show what status each of those items is at. There's a lot of items on there. We've identified more than 100 policies that need to be looked at and potentially amended. We don't know if they need to be amended or not, but we expect they might need to be amended. And that does include 60 policies from our childcare centres. So when I said earlier that our childcare centres already meet national standards, that is correct, but they, our policies need to be amended just a tiny bit to refer to the Tasmanian legislation. So hopefully that won't be too big of a task. And in terms of our external networks, we are part of the Elgat Safeguarding Children Advisory Network, which, as I said, has been a fantastic resource and a place to share information and skills. And this one's new, the Task Crossed Child Safe Organisations Community Practice, which I joined this morning. So I just realised I skipped over quite a bit of stuff there, so let me go back to this slide and give you a bit more detail about what we've done. So we have a policy that will come to council, hopefully in the September council meeting. The Safeguarding Children and Young People Policy is, has been extensively workshopped throughout different parts of council. workshopped throughout different parts of council. We definitely learned a lot from the policies that other councils have made and we think we've adapted it well to suit our needs. So hopefully when you look at that policy, you'll feel that it is comprehensive and robust. And if you have questions, please do bring, please do bring them to us. We, as I mentioned, our senior records officer is working on a document management framework that will show, because of the sensitive nature of the documents relating to this issue, there'll need to be some security protocols. We don't want anyone to be able to read a, a report, a child safety concern. So that is evolving and we're, we're going to be taking some advice on where that security access level sits and who, who manages the reports. We'll be continuing to participate in those networks that I mentioned, the Legat network, Task Cross network, and Neighborhood Houses Tasmania is also doing a bit of work in this space. So under the, there was a fairly amorphous responsibility for local governments about supporting community organisations. And while that is fairly vague at the moment, and at the moment, the Office of the Independent Regulator is really playing that role right now, in the future, that might be us. So it might, it might fall on us to support sports clubs, dance schools, girl guides, whoever it is in our community that works for young people. So we'll keep an eye on that space and we'll, we'll keep sharing those, the information, the resources and the skills that we develop through those networks. We've identified staff wellbeing as a, as a really important item for us. That's a standing item on our working group meeting agendas. Acknowledging that this topic can be really distressing for people, both because of their personal experience and also because of the way that a person might be reporting a concern, they might be highly distressed. So we've been looking at ways to support staff in that space as well. And our customer service team are really great in that space and they have some great mechanisms in space, in place already. Community organisations, as I've already mentioned, training, we've got, there's quite a lot of free training available already as some of the other states are a bit ahead of Tasmania. As I mentioned, the Office of the Children's Guardian in New South Wales has some fantastic training available, it's all free. Victoria's the same. The Office of the Independent Regulator is making some Tasmanian-specific training. So we'll be able to use that when it's available and that's what we'll embed into our staff training and induction processes. Our H R team are looking at recruitment and screening really closely. We've had some great advice on how to do this as best we can. Like I said, you can never, you can never get, we can, we can never be absolutely guaranteed that we'd pick, pick up an issue like this in recruitment, but we will do our absolute best to minimise that chance. And we have already updated our venue hire and lease agreements at council and through the Moon Art Centre. We are reviewing our events on council land agreements and our council grants guidelines to incorporate child safety information into those documents and processes and our contracts and procurement processes. And as that training becomes available from the O I R in the future, we might actually be asking the practice to do that training before they work in our space. That's, we haven't set that yet, but the Department of Education, Children and Young People has a process like that in place already and we may choose to do the same. The other thing is signage, so at the moment we've, we're just sort of making a list of venues and spaces where it would be appropriate and desired to have information about child safety installed and we'll go through a design process and a consultation with community around what looks best and whether it's meets their needs in, throughout September and October. Okay. And I think our properties team has done a really good job of contract, of contacting every organisation that has had an event on our property or hired a space over the last ten years to let them know that this legislation is, requires them to meet these obligations. So we're basically using every opportunity we can to promote, raise awareness and to put community organisations in touch with the resources that they need to meet their obligations. So what can elected members do right now? We're using social media to keep community updated. So if that is, if you find those resources useful, please do share them. If you're finding that people come into you with questions, please use the processes to, to, to get us to answer those questions. There is a great free training for councils through the Office of the Children's Guardian. That one's specifically for local governments and it is New South Wales framework. But it's the best thing I've found so far for, for you guys that might meet your needs. Feel free to do more training than that, but that's a really good one, it's about thirty minutes. The Office of the Independent Regulator has a newsletter, they have social media, you can follow and share and amplify their events. Listen to community, share information, that's, that's basically, be our champions, champions of child safety, that's what I would love to see. As I mentioned, the policy will come to you in September and I understand that some of you have a Working with Vulnerable People card already. That's optional, that's because elected members are covered by the Local Government Code of Conduct rather than the Glenockie Council Code of Conduct. That is optional for you guys to do, but I think it's a fantastic tool that you can use. Challenges and opportunities, so as I've mentioned, document management is a challenge because of some changes that are being, that are happening internally regarding I T and document management itself. So while we are working on a framework, we are not sure whether to apply it. We're just working out how to apply that to our current system or our future system. So when that gets rolled out is a question of when our software change is over. Our H R team are working on their recruitment processes, as I mentioned, and incorporating all the advice from, from government regarding screening as well. Something that might pop up in the future is the cost of future investigations. So I've mentioned investigations already. How much does an investigation cost? Well, that's really a question like, how long is a piece of string? It depends. So it's very hard to budget for that and I'm glad that that's not my job. And in terms of consulting children, young people and families, our community engagement team, stakeholder engagement team are fantastic in this space already and are doing lots of activities with young people and children at the moment and over the next few months. We have the activities that happen every day out the front door. Those mechanisms that have been building in the last year are going to provide an avenue for us to do, to find out if our processes are working for children and young people. But we might be working on other mechanisms in future. What that, I don't know, that's, that's an evolving space. And acknowledgement of past harm. So earlier in this presentation, I did make a mention that some people in this room may have had their own experience of child abuse or child sexual abuse. And that's something that we as a council could consider as well. So government's doing it, the Office of the Independent Regulator has made an acknowledgement as well that was included on that slide. And that's something that we could consider doing in future as well. I popped this slide in this morning as well because I wanted people to know. This is one of those information sessions from the Office of the Independent Regulator. It's for anyone to go to, it's free. I think it's about an hour-long session and it's, this one's specifically around recruitment. So if you're a sports club or some kind of hobby group that's looking for a new coach or something, how do you make sure that you're choosing the right person? These guys will help you work on that. And these are some of the support services that are available for people. So Tell Someone is a new site created by the Tasmanian government. It's for anyone, so anyone of any age can access that site and it will send you to the right service. Strong Families Safe Kids is the advice and referral line. So that's, that's the number to call if you're worried about a child and you think that their safety is at risk. The Kids Help Line is a fantastic support service for children and young people and Lifeline's just a really, a really good one for adults. So once again, always just encourage people to reach out if they are looking for support in this space. And now for questions.
Okay, Alderman, Alderton.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a question, Scott, in regards to the reportable conduct scheme. So as we all know, child abuse or alleged child abuse can occur between a perpetrator of any age and a child. So it couldn't necessarily be someone that's under eighteen plus. So how, how does council and how does the reportable conduct scheme and does the independent regulator become involved? If, say, for example, council had somebody here on work placement who was under eighteen years of age in a childcare centre in Vile or somewhere else, or an apprentice who was working for the organisation and we have an allegation or a, a concern raised regarding child abuse, that gives, how is that dealt with and how is that actioned?
Great question. So if the person whose behaviour is of concern is under eighteen, they would not be reported through this scheme. So this scheme is specifically for adults over eighteen whose behaviour towards someone under eighteen is of a concern. So if, if you were looking at two people who were under eighteen, their behaviour towards each other would be dealt with separately. And potentially, if the calling the police was the right thing to do, then that would be how you would look at it. But you wouldn't notify the independent regulator in that case, specifically for adults.
So the only option council has in that situation is to, to get the law in?
No, we have our own code of conduct already, so we would deal with any conduct issues according to those procedures.
Thank you, councillor Quick.
I've got quite a few. Informing children of their rights, what about their responsibilities? Do you mean, why isn't that included? Informing children of their rights and their responsibilities?
Because this-
Not just rights?
Yeah, I understand your passion about this, I think it's really important. But this legislation is specifically about the behaviour of adults towards children and it's specifically about the abuse of children by adults. So this legislation really is aiming to support children and young people to understand that they shouldn't be experiencing those types of behaviour and what to do if they are. So your concern, which is about
Well, if you're encompassing ideas, you know, it's not just one-sided, it's, you know, double-sided. Talking about rights, there should be responsibilities on the other side. My other question is, what processes have you got in place? If children turn up, for example, at our childcare centres and they're obviously malnourished, they've got bruises, what are the processes that you undertake to ensure that, you know, that they're not at risk?
Yeah, that's really important and I have to say, our childcare centres are really doing great work in this space. They are already mandatory reporters, they are already meeting the national standards. And in a, in a situation like that, they would have to call Strong Families Safe Kids, which is this number here. That's the referral line. So if, if a child showed up with signs of abuse, they would have to notify the government about that.
Okay, okay. We don't operate in isolation, so if things, say for example, happen at Rosetta Primary School, are they obligated to let a council know that things are happening there? Or is, you know, or if something happens in our domain, do we disseminate the information to, to local schools? That, you know, this is a person at risk?
That's a really great question. And that, that, this issue is why the information sharing legislation has been amended. So if somebody, if a staff member at Rosetta Primary, for example, was also undertaking activities on behalf of council, then they would have to tell us. If one of our workers who worked in a job that involved children, if an allegation was made against one of our workers and, and we knew that they also coached sports, children's sports, we would have to let that organisation know that investigation was happening. And in that instance, the worker should be removed from any child-facing activities while the investigation happens. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Cultural awareness. I mean, children identify as Aboriginal. Okay, so one of the processes, I mean, they're not going to be wearing badges, for God's sake. So have the staff alerted to, you know, these are children who claim aboriginality? And how do you spread this cultural awareness amongst, you know, five and six and seven-year-olds?
Yeah, great question. This is still something that is evolving for us and we as a council are working towards meeting our reconciliation action plan, which is steps that we're taking as an organisation to become a culturally safe organisation. So as we make progress down that road, we will be, you know, making, we're finding ways to make our organisation better and safer and more inclusive for Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. So that when a child of any background, but particularly of Aboriginal or Torres Strait Islander background interacts with us, they are coming to a culturally safe place, right? So that should apply to all of our activities and that's the goal in the future. And at the moment, we're just sort of at the early part of that.
Okay, as my last question, there used, when I was teaching, there used to be safe houses where if a child was approached in the street, they could go to fourteen Islington Street and there was a sign visible there that this was a safe house. So are you, are you planning to set these up? And then how do you vet the people within those houses to make sure that they're kosher and, and they are responsible people?
Yeah.
Because I think, you know, lots of children need to be informed, you know, about how things operate in this day and age?
Yes, I, I remember safety house.
And I mean, that sign you had, you know, that triangle?
Yeah.
You know, on, on the letterbox or on the front door or something, I think it'd be a, a great thing to, to say, this is a safe house.
That, I, thank you, I, I remember that as well, when that was out as well. But that, that was a project that was done under the neighbourhood watch programmes. And then it was found that it was very difficult to maintain it because people move and different people move into, into properties. So having that little sign on the letterbox, because I remember that little green house that used to sit on your letterbox and that let kids know that if they were in trouble or worried, they could come to your house. But they found that there was an issue with tracking people and finding out who was living in the house with people moving. So that's not really a programme that's running out there at the moment.
So is it working effectively in any of the states or overseas examples?
Not that I'm aware of, I'd have to go and check on it, but I do remember that's, I had family members heavily involved in neighbourhood watch and it was abandoned for that purpose. That was in Victoria, I can only assume that it's gone elsewhere.
I'll tell you about it, it's mine too.
Okay, lads. I would, I would just like to mention that our neighbourhood houses are well on the road towards supporting people in this space. So the Neighborhood Houses Tasmania, we have a few neighbourhood houses in our municipality. They're playing a really important role in being one of those safe places for children.
But there are no schools within a bull's roar. But there are no schools within a bull's roar of the one-up at Chippewa. The nearest school is Austin's Ferry and the other one is Rosetta.
Okay, would Alderman Slade like to add something to that?
Oh, I'd just like to say that I'm probably one of the only persons in this room here who's actually uh charged people of um who unfortunately have and um ill-behaved with young people, you know, former police detective. Um, also, I was the state coordinator for neighbourhood watch and, and the safety house programme. And the reason why the safety house programme ended uh, uh, councillor Quick and other councillors uh was the fact is that people didn't move around too much and uh police found it too hard to check out on the people that are in the house all the time. And the visitors are coming to the house, you know, how you vetted that. So there's a programme that we have a lot of uh guts, so that did a lot of good things. And then unfortunately, the police service finds it easier to sort of pull the pin on these programmes without looking at perhaps how they can streamline them. So that's what happened there. Um, thank you for the presentation. I find something really missing from all this whole act and this whole thing is the, is the lack of police. Uh, like supporters of the bar were there, why isn't the police there on that page?
Uh, in an emergency, certainly, um, you should contact the police. And if uh an investigation found that uh something criminal had occurred, then the police should be notified as part of that investigation.
My problem there, Scout, of all this, is that um, can I tell you now, when you're interviewing people who have offenders against young people, you've got to have special skills to, to investigate these people. You have special skills to um, let's say, bring together evidence and you've got to have special skills of what's the next step to go. I just, just my mind just boggles when I look at that scale there that the police don't come involved until there's something of a criminal, criminal nature. So in other words, it's all done by the, this group, the office of the regulator until then. Well, I doubt very much those people have got the skills. I really mean that. This is a tough gig. It's a tough gig, you'd probably disagree with what I'm saying. But what I'm saying is the fact is that uh these people are got a lot of skill in relation to being compulsive liars and all, and all these other things. And um I really think it's a, it's a police perspective to be further up that uh track before it gets, gets to just the organisation. And then the time gets to organisation, you carry on again to another report. And then it's given to, oh, look, we think uh, uh, this is, there's definitely something happened here. Uh, so we'll now, we'll now call the police in. That, that doesn't write comfortable to me, it just, does not write comfortable to me. I'm a person who's driven and I'm a father, I'm a grandfather, I'm investigated. I really find it difficult trying to use word, nice words to these people. But I've investigated these people and I've charged these people. But at the end of the day, in relation to all this, is that I, I just can't work out why we are just playing around the edges a little bit in relation to not having the police called in on an earlier stage. And also, I couldn't see anywhere in the legislation, you know, there's a lot of people out there who actually get their children to make false claims. Actually make false claims. It's dreadful, absolutely dreadful. Uh, the same as, you know, um, I'm pleased there's, there's resources to address people, obviously. I understand the legislation, I understand it's, it's there to, to get, to support uh the finding offenders for these poor children who, under eighteen, have been subject to whatever. But there's, there's some shortfalls there and I really get concerned about the investigation. Um, all the other investigations that are un, are undertaken prior to the police investigation though. I'll leave it there.
If I could just quickly say that um I didn't talk about the police uh because this legislation isn't asking us to do the job of the police at all. We're expected to partner with the police.
Yes.
And if uh the police need to be called in as part of the investigation, they should be as soon as possible. Uh, but the Office of the Independent, the reportable conduct scheme is just, it's updating the Office of the Independent Regulator on the process of the investigation. So if in that three-day report, we are notifying the police, we tell them that we've notified the police. That's part of the report that we make. Uh, and so absolutely, the police are the professionals in this space and we're not trying to um take on that role at all.
That, that wasn't in your presentation.
I mean, yes, you, you're right, I didn't talk very much about that.
So you can understand, I, I've been a police officer for a long time. I just saw this to be so, um, un-called police at the end, right? I just wonder what, what, what's the, what's all this about? We're going to have all these de facto police officers, are we? So that's why I'm asking the question.
No, not at all. So we will absolutely be relying on the police to play that role.
I'm very happy with that.
Not trying to take, take on. Yeah, so are there reporting obligation details? So if somebody, if a member of the public comes to us with a concern, uh, we would assess that concern, we'd say, okay, what, what information do we have? What do we do with that information? Reporting to the Office of the Independent Regulator is, it's mandatory, we have to do it. And we have to tell them if we've contacted the police or not, or if we plan to contact the police. That's part of the information that we do.
Yeah, I've got a problem, Scout, but had that been mentioned there, I would not have been, what, what last five, 10 minutes? But you didn't mention that, right? And I saw it as a shortfall or whatever. I just never want that break to go away where we've got a fancy government department who's trying to do a massive good job, by the way, trying to do uh the role of the police with a group of individuals who need police to do all the times, perhaps more than um some, some of the people. So I'll just leave it like that.
Alderman Holson.
Oh, thank you. So just another question that comes to light now after Alderman Slade's comment. What concerns me with this legislation a, a, and with us as a council, the policy we're developing here is? I still think we're missing the mark with that age group of the fourteen to under eighteen age group, where your comments you made earlier about, that there's no capturing and by understanding and, and storing of that information because this is the age group where we potentially could nip in the boat and prevent these people becoming the future adult child abusers. So if they're falling through the cracks, what do we do? Are, are, are we letting ourselves down as a council by not having a, a secondary policy that gives us the power to add greater in that area and, 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 and and store the information and pass it on the, the appropriate authorities and the appropriate support services? Because this really concerns me because this is where a lot of these, a lot of these young adults, you know, sixteen, seventeen-year-old age bracket, they become tomorrow's adult child sex offenders and, and child abusers. And I feel we're, they're falling through the cracks here under this legislation, which is no fault of councils. But can we develop a policy, a separate policy that um captures and identifies and provides some support in that area?
We can uh, we can look at our activity, uh the activities that we offer and the processes, the procedures, the training that we offer. So in the instance that this young person was working for council, um, they would absolutely be covered by our Code of Conduct.
That would concern me.
That should cover all of this stuff. Uh, but because that person falls outside of this specific act, it wouldn't be covered as part of this project.
Yeah.
Uh, but if we come to a place where we are looking through our policy and procedure and we identify gaps for young people who are working with council, then we will look at uh finding a way to, to, to-
Because what concerns, what concerns me is they're under eighteen. Council might take the appropriate action when they might terminate someone's employment because of their, their behaviour. But then they go out into society and move on, they don't end up on a sex offenders register. They don't get identified and, and, and flagged anywhere in the system. But, but they're free to, you know, move into some other organisation somewhere else, re-offending anything automatically. But that is a real concern for me. There's no difference than any other crime.
Yeah, and I think also that um when you're talking about people moving between organisations, um, this legislation and the framework is um, it's designed to try and address some of those problems. So when, for example, if we were recruiting a new worker, um, we'd be incorporating questions about child safety into our reference checks. So, you know, if someone had worked for us and their behaviour had been a concern, uh, we'd hope that their future employer would contact us and we could talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, it could go vice versa too.
Yeah.
You could have somebody from somewhere else with a, a questionable background, under eighteen, questionable behaviour and they can land up on your doorstep with no, and, and you've got no proof, no evidence of that occurring. But then you may end up dealing with a future event that could have been avoided.
And these systems can't be perfect, but we can just do our best to make sure that they are as strong and thorough as we can.
Sorry to interrupt.
I, I mean, just to add that this is a huge step forward from where we have been in the past. And hopefully it's not the instep, it's just a step in the right direction, that's probably the thing I'd say. Also, Scout's done an amazing amount of work on this so far to get us to this point. Um, particularly to the point where Scout's quite often getting asked to do presentations outside of council to other groups like Alcat and Big Neighbourhood House Conference coming up, where Scout's been invited to do a presentation there to the Wood, it's been done. Yep, so just a credit to Scout on the wood that's been done so far.
Yeah, it's very exciting showing for it, thank you. Um, Debbie?
Thank you, May. Um, yeah, great presentation and it's obvious that you've got a head wrapped around it, which is great to see. And thank you for it. Just regarding the in, investigation side of things, it's, I, I guess for us to then investigate something that of an allegation. Um, uh, do we have any sort of processes and, and procedures and things in that space already? Or is that something that will come?
Uh, we, we don't have our own in place yet. The first step is the safeguarding children and young people policy. Um, but we would absolutely do, a, any investigations that we did, we would do hand-in-hand with the independent regulator.
Yeah.
So they are on call to support organisations with investigations. They have a lot of resources there, uh, and investigation plan, uh, example allegation letters, um, how to learn from an investigation. So part of this um legislation, uh, the, the child safe standards encourages us so that when a report is made, we actually use that as an opportunity to review our policy and procedure, uh, to go back and look for ways to make them better.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, we absolutely would uh be taking expert advice from-
As part of that, so you're kind of working hand-in-hand with them along the way.
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Now, the thing that I just wanted to ask about in terms of, and you did mention it, in terms of people who hire our grounds and hire our buildings and sporting clubs and all that sort of, um, we've obviously, part of it, we want them to try and meet the obligations that they have. How do, how do we, what are we doing to make sure that they do meet those obligations? Because a lot of them are probably behind the, like, from where we are. So if they're not, if we're just getting up to speed, they're probably not quite up to speed as well. So how do we make sure that they are meeting the obligations?
That's right. So um our council booking system, uh, at the moment, the council booking system just includes a clause about child safety. So like any other workplace health and safety or any other legislation, um, there's a section that, that says that the hirer agrees to meet their obligations under the law.
Yeah.
Uh, that is a, a good first step. Uh, but as time goes by, we might look at making that a bit more uh rigorous. And Moona Arts Centre staff have actually taken that a little bit further. So they have a, an inquiry form for groups that want to book the space. And if they tick a box that says their activities involve children and young people, they should get a call from a venue manager. Uh, Hamish, who calls them and says, okay, well, have you thought about this? Have you heard of this legislation? Have you got these checks and balances in place? Which is, um, it's fantastic to be able to offer that through the Moona Arts Centre and we may look at doing that through other venues as well.
And just another one for me, just in terms of current leases that we've got in place. So for instance, obviously there's other leases that are in place and there's, um, thoughts around that.
So the advice that I've been given on that is that the existing leases can't have clauses added to them. But everyone has been notified that this is a legislative change that affects every organisation in Tasmania. So we've done our best to tell everyone that there's a new law that they need to comply with.
Yeah.
Uh, but we can't go back and alter those contracts. All of the new contracts will contain that information.
So I've sold, I think, the first, first lease or licence off with an updated provision.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Slade.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, how is the flow of information, is there any issues with that from state to state? We mentioned a group of issues with registration.
The reason that I mentioned that earlier is that uh our working with vulnerable people, registration to work with vulnerable people process um is fairly state-based. And there isn't a lot of communication between those organisations in different states. Um, I'm actually going to be learning about that more on Friday when I'm going to a presentation from the CBOS who manage that mechanism. And I think um as this sort of magnifying glass gets applied to all of these sections, more changes will happen in the future. So I can't really give you more information about that now, but it is something that we're aware of. Yeah.
Councillor Kendall, did you have anything to say?
No.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to emphasise, Scout, again, I'm a big supporter of this new group. So it's a, it's a result of the terrific things that, you know, I've seen happen to kids. Uh, that I'm pleased that it's, it's actually underway. And my only other, and I couldn't see it anywhere written in there, is that um when um something has been reported, an allegation, and it's been, you know, drawn through to the OIR and uh nothing happens and that person moves to another place and nothing happens. And then it moves on again to another place and doesn't happen. What is the drawing or the inference? Or how is the HR areas of respective places going to deal with those type of things? Because, you know, don't get me wrong, I'm, these people, I've come to, you know, do these things to these people, it doesn't stand a chance for me. But I am a big stickler about um deny, don't deny people natural justice, right? So um how, how, how are we going to deal with that? Nobody's been charged, right? And it's got to come in here, so that means the person doesn't get the job? Or, you know, or applies for a, that's what I, I couldn't read it anymore.
Yeah, it's a, it's a sticky question.
I couldn't see it anywhere.
Partly, I think, um, this is, this issue is sort of covered by the information sharing.
Yes, I understand.
Mechanisms and also through recruitment and screening mechanisms.
No.
So for example, a, a recruitment process might incorporate a question to a referee, has there been any reportable conduct investigations involving this worker?
Yeah.
Because they can't tell us what the details of that investigation, uh, but they can tell us if an investigation has happened. I'll have to double-check that to be hundred percent sure. But um, like I said, no system can be infallible. But uh it's about putting enough overlapping processes in place to reduce the risk of this happening. And you're absolutely right, um, people who uh display this behaviour uh time and time again are very, very skilled.
Of course they are.
At manipulating the system and manipulating people. Um, and so, as I said, we can't be a hundred percent sure that our systems are going to be perfect, but we're just going to do the best that we can.
Okay, I accept that. As, as long as there's somewhere along the line, policing, whatever, that something's developed where there's just not people hounded down. I don't think that we were too many, but uh because where there's smoke, there's always fire in those, trust me. Uh, where, as long as there's natural justice being seen and whatever for those people who, it was just an allegation and whatever, I mean, there's twenty of them, that speaks for, I'd say there's one and then went for another job. And, and I just want to know how, you might be able to tell me the next time uh this comes up, just how they're going to deal with that, that's all, just uh, yeah, from that point of view.
I think, uh, it's my understanding that it would be in other states. It's, it's been shown to be a pattern that if an investigation is opened against somebody who actually is involved in behaviour that meets the criteria for child abuse. Uh, they might actually resign before that investigation is concluded. And you're right, that would create a pattern.
Yes.
Uh, but it would be hard to follow up between organisations. And that's why this information sharing stuff is so important.
And Scout can tell you now and everybody else seeing it, that everyone I looked at, even where I couldn't prove it, um, um, there was e, evidence that it had happened before, but it wasn't reported. That's another area about the non-reporting. That's another area about the non-reporting part that I couldn't pick up and hear either very much through the thing that, hey, I know it's going to be for your presentations to encourage people, but people must report things.
Yeah.
And the most simple things, you know, uses of cameras and other things like that. This grooming area is so enormous and big. Uh, you need a lot of, oh, look, I, I know you've got a lot of skills and people, it just worries me. I just don't want the, the O I R to turn to a second police department without calling the police in when they really, really want, you know, they call them in too late. That's all, that's all. So it's a great, it's a great agency. I'm pleased it's happened. Great presentation. Good luck for it all. I'm pleased the council at the, at the forefront of this area, whatever. Uh, but, uh, I just want to see a little bit more perhaps unity between those agencies. That's all. Thank you.
So are there any other questions from elected members? Okay, Scout, that was a fantastic presentation. Thank you. Your professionalism, knowledge, um, passion and desire to see this implemented throughout council is to be commended. Um, and it's good to see that rather started the journey ahead of quite a lot of other people. So I'm really proud of you that you've been asked to, um, present at other organisations, you know, an asset.
Want to say that, when I say that this is a really collaborative effort, it truly is. And that our working group, um, has an enthusiasm for this work. That's commendable.
Yeah, well, you're obviously leading from the front and we're very impressed. Um, could I ask a favour though, um, just to make life easier for elected members? Uh, can you put that, just email around that link for the optional training? And also there was another link, oh, the four minute video. That's okay. All right, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I think this is a murky area. Um, I don't understand the relationship between the Child Commissioner, Children's Commissioner and the O I R. Wow, yeah. Are you able to explain that?
Well, my understanding is that the, the commissioner for children, uh, the role of that person is to advocate for children a- across many different topics.
Mm-hmm.
So they have, uh, a fantastic mechanism for the voice of children, um, called, I think it's called the YEP Youth Engagement Platform. Um, so that, that tool exists for organisations to tap into if they want to. But the commissioner really is representing the rights of children on many, many topics. And that does include this topic, um, but it's much broader than just this topic. And so the independent regulator is purely looking after the reportable conduct scheme.
Right. So will your slides be put up online?
I believe so.
Yes, excellent.
And I think you've all received them already.
Thank you, yes. But, um, we're trying to open these workshops, so it'd be handy for other people to be able to access them too. So that being our open workshop, oh, no, it doesn't. CEO would like a comment.
I mean, I was just going to mention at the Legat meeting on, um, last week, there was a, um, a, a Legat recommendation from one of the councils, uh, relating to the working with vulnerable people checks for local government candidates. Um, and the recommendation was that Legat, uh, lobbying the state government to introduce mandatory working with vulnerable children, um, checks for, for candidates for local government office. Uh, that was, there were some that spoke against that, but it was, it was passed, um, passed at the, at the form. Form.
Cool. Thank you. So that, um, draws our meeting to a close. We thank everybody online who's attended and people who've come in from, um, outside of council to join us. And sincerely thank you once again, Scout. And on behalf of all of the elected officials here, good night. Carry on.
Thank you.